No.
We're going to call, we're going to call the meeting to order at 7:04. Selectmen's meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Our first appointment is at 7:15, so I guess we'll get started on the rest of the stuff. Okay. We have a bunch of minutes for approval, but I have to admit, I haven't read them. Does anyone have other people that?
I didn't, and I couldn't notice anything.
I read them, and I thought they were fine.
Okay, I mean, yes, I'm.
And we should probably approve them because somebody wants them.
Well, they can go out in their draft form, I think, unless you want me to.
No, no, if you two have read them, and I just hadn't had a chance to read them because I've been on vacation.
They're a story, and many pages.
Yeah. Okay, I'm willing to.
What's the date?
Take a motion for.
April 28th.
Hang on.
Open and executive.
I gotta see if everybody was here. All right, so April 28th. Open and executive session, we were all here, so I take a motion.
I would move to approve the minutes of the April 28th meeting.
Open and.
Yeah, open and.
And executive, yep.
And I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next one is Monday, May 27th. And again, we were all present. I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes, both open and executive for that night.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Which date was someone requesting the minutes?
The April 28th, that was Burke, Berlin Gulf.
Oh, that's this one, okay.
First set.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion to appoint Walter Bickford as the alternate representative to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I'll make the motion since Walter's the subject of it.
Oh, so moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any abstaining?
Abstain.
All right. We have a vote here to appoint Brandon McNeil of 95 Farmington Circle Marlboro as a member of the Rescue Squad as a first responder. I take a motion to that effect?
I would so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is recommended by Danny?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody change hats. This is a vote by the Board of Selectmen Act Against Personnel Committee. It is a vote to approve the pay rate grade five, step three. Sixteen seventy-nine an hour for Inspector Land use clerk Julie Pratt, effective today. Take a motion to that?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next thing on the agenda is Chapter 90 reimbursement request. Indicating the project was approved on 7/16/14. You want to talk about?
That happens to be the South Street.
Okay.
Improvement. Again, that money is waiting to be sent to us, we just need your signature.
Okay. And this says it was approved on 7/16/4, 252-399-96.
That's the total cost of the project.
Yep.
Chapter 90 should be 187.
Seven six ninety-nine sixty-five.
That's how much they'll be getting to us, and the rest comes from Article 17 and Article 26.
Okay.
When the town approves.
All right. I take a motion to the effect of approving the reimbursement request?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Two pages.
Yeah, I saw it. Thank you. You can never be too careful.
The second was actually the final report pertinent to that request.
Okay.
You'll be holmen and filling in along the sides of South Street there as things goes on?
We would have already been done, but my mentor said they needed a vacation, so there's only been two of us around, so.
Get normal guys working for you then, huh? Good for them.
They do take a break, yeah.
Yeah.
Very often.
I walked up to the store this morning and down, so I got a look at the boy, some of that crap right off.
What's second?
I was like, who is she waving to?
I see the back of the head.
Up front, up front, I'm not alone here.
This one, or this one?
You're the board.
You are.
We'll just do this one more, and then we'll start you at what our clock says, it's 7:15. The next item here was an email that we discussed at our last meeting. It was from Virginia Mackey, and it requested a letter regarding stating some things about the lip in connection with Sawyer Hill, and in connection with foreclosure and sale of units. And I had said that I didn't understand the letter, or what
That's right.
purpose of it was, and that I would call, I asked Virginia to call me, and she did, and I called her back. She didn't really understand it either, and didn't know where the contents really came from. And so I said to her that she had my number, and as it, you know, as it developed, if the parties, the bank.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying you have to, I didn't know that if you're ready for it or not, if not, just.
No, I'm just, I'm updating people as far as, you know, that I did. So basically, I said to her, she had the number, and if they if they had something that actually, you know, came from, was requested by a foreclosing party, a potential buyer, or whatever, she had the number, and I said, as of the beginning of September, we'd be meeting every week, so we'd be in a position to respond pretty quickly to it. But she, she didn't understand, so this is, this is just pending until we hear further from her.
Cableing it, eh?
Yep. All right, we have a 7:15 meeting with the Board of Assessors, which is preparation for the classification hearing. And this is to include the SunEdison pilots.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Over to you.
All right, which one do you want first?
Let's do the pilot, get it done.
Okay. At 5:30, I received a phone call from SunEd's lawyer. He's been trying to track down where those signatures were today. Guess it was a snafu of California, they put it in the snail mail, all the papers.
Okay.
So FedEx won't be here till tomorrow. So Rick, our attorney for the town, sent this email saying, have the board, because, just to back up, we cannot get our tax rate approved until they have all the signatures on the document, and it goes to DOR. That's when we begin the discussion about approving all the forms.
So, the suggestion is that we approve it and sign it, and hold it in escrow until the other signatures get here.
So what they would do is get those three signature pages.
Who's they?
SunEd.
Okay.
We asked them to sign three papers, so that we had three original signatures.
For?
One for you, one for them, and one for Willard. Willard.
Okay.
So once we get their signatures, then you're the chairman, and you would, and I'd need to track you down, or Mary would track you down and get you to sign their papers. Then I would take those to Willard and have him.
So they only require one signature?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna be.
Is that good for you?
Yep, I will be around until Thursday evening this week, and back in, in town on Tuesday next week, so hopefully it's going to come here.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
As planned.
Okay.
How long does it take you to get it through the DOR?
I'm hoping not long. But we were ahead of schedule, the team worked really quick. I didn't think I was going to be here with numbers tonight, because we had a couple of, we had four departments that did not submit a paperwork to the accountant. So she's closed the books, this is the first year we've done this. And so we got the rest of the documentation, and we have an estimated number for you this evening.
Are we off to the second topic already?
Yeah, we're rolling right in there.
I think before we move to, we ought to probably approve the first.
So that's kind of what happens, is in order to get anything approved, they, they won't even look at the forms, they're all submitted in Boston, but.
Okay. All right. Then I would accept a motion to agree, to, to sign the pilot agreement as presented to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen this evening on the recommendation of council and the Board of Assessors.
So move.
Second.
Said that, is there any discussion?
I don't even want to know, because it's way too complex. That's a lawyer document, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, she can't even find a signature.
I know, there you go.
That's a complicated. No, no problem, take your time.
We did end up including the as-built as part of the document.
Okay.
And also a list of equipment.
So is there an as-built that's different from the original plan, because I was starting to get confused about that?
Yeah, there's a Blue Wave plan, and then there's the SunEd plan.
That's the one that we saw was the Blue Wave.
Yeah.
Okay. And the SunEd plan is the as-built, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's the one that's attached?
Yes, as well as we required them to take the as-built and be very specific as to the number of modules.
Good, because I asked Larry, I said.
With the fair market value number. Yeah, yeah. And the DOR will like that, too, because then it'll match our income analysis on the twenty-year plan.
What was the Blue Wave plan? I remember that was originally.
That was the sort of first guys who came in and were putting this deal together, whereas SunEd is the actual.
Doer.
Yeah, doer of it, yes.
Yeah.
They were the concept.
Right. So that was like my only, in the, the last part of this document was, are we really sending the notices to Blue Wave? And the answer is yes, because.
If that's what it says, is the notice address?
Yeah, the notices is the origination, you know, LLC, and then there's the SunEd partnership. So this is the, I don't know if there were any other questions about the document. And we, the only other thing you, that was really changed was.
And I have three of these I have to sign?
No, we're just going to sign the one this evening, so that we have that, because then their signature will be original on three, then we'll have you sign.
So if you email me, if it comes in tomorrow, I could come in tomorrow evening, or I'm working from home on Wednesday, I could come in.
Oh, we're not here tomorrow, but.
Yeah, we're not here tomorrow. We're all at GOTMS training, so.
I could come in, Wednesday would be great, because I'm working from home, so I could come in during the day on Wednesdays.
Okay, great.
But let me know that they get, they got here.
Yeah.
Okay? All right.
Didn't actually vote yet, it was.
I know that, yep, no, I'm, I'm.
And the only other thing we did was.
She's trying to rush me along, but I'm losing my.
To clean up the, there is no in lieu of, payment in lieu of tax, it, you know, language on this front page, because I didn't want the DOR to be confused. It's still under pilot law, but.
I understand.
Okay, and we cleaned up the SunEd name at your request.
That is SunHee Solar Berlin one LLC.
Yes, it was, it was funky, the way it was spelled. It was all caps, so that was some change.
All right, any further discussion or questions?
No.
Hearing none, I'll take, ask for a vote, all those in favor of executing the tax agreement with SunHee Solar Berlin one LLC?
Aye.
Aye.
It's updated. Going to be barging in the air pretty soon. Kind of what I was over.
It only took, what, May, June, July, August?
Can you men it down?
This agreement, when did you start this?
It was like the mid-May, yeah. Right after, right after town meeting. I mean, we kind of had, you know, the draft before town meeting, but we really didn't get to work on it, and then. So. Mary, do you want to hold this, if you'd like it then?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and then I think we can go on to the next event.
Okay, so, so these, these are all estimates at this point, because we don't have any approvals yet from the DOR. I'll just go over, I figured, you know, last year we had, you know, a, a meeting prior to setting the tax rate. This is just like the options page, I'll just link to you. Kind of what I thought process here was, but just a little bit about the process, so.
Just, just to remind you, we'll be aiming to actually do this when?
September 8th.
September 8th?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have the fallback date of the 15th.
I may not be around the 8th, but, I mean, it doesn't matter, we don't necessarily have.
I will be here on the 15th.
Okay, so.
Okay, so we'll have two.
Yeah, we have a number of people, yeah, yeah.
So the month of September, you will only have two people.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a number of us that are out.
So that's good, we're here tonight, so then maybe you can share your opinions of where you think we're going.
So what, what are these FY14 numbers, sixteen sixty-seven?
So sixteen sixty-seven was your residential rate last year. Twenty-three ninety-one was the commercial rate, commercial industrial rate, and twenty-three fifty-three was your personal property rate. And the difference there was because of the small commercial exemption. The exemption amount, the credit that you give back to those commercial property owners that qualify, gets added to the commercial rate, but the personal property rate stays adjusted.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, and that was at a 1.27 percent shift.
Yep.
So this year was not a revalue, although sales are increasing, we were able to maintain the values where they were this year, so there are no adjustments other than new construction, or, you know, the regaled construction that's going on. So, but we did have a lot of growth. I gave the number three fifty to the FinCom, and we actually, if I can get it certified at four twenty-eight.
Wow.
So there's, there's big numbers in the next four years, and we anticipated that. So that's mostly due to the solar farm, the Highland Commons project, and the condominium development, and really the big degree double growth that's finished. I think we have, no, yeah, that didn't even start yet, so that's next year. So where we ended up, let's see. So all things kind of, small commercial exemption was kind of in the same ballpark, it went from a million nine to a two million dollar shift. It's pretty close to where it was last year, but all those numbers. So what I gave you on the last page of this document, I highlighted. If you were using the twenty-three ninety-one.
I don't have a highlight.
Commercial. Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, here, take this one, I thought I highlighted them all, maybe you've got the extra one that I had, there you go.
Well, now I need my front page.
Okay, well, this one, Kath, there you go. So when I highlighted that, and June and I worked on making some other modifications.
So what is the highlighted one, 1.3225, is that what would keep it?
Well, it had, it had been, so I was shooting for, if you, if you kept the commercial rate the same, and doing, using all the numbers we had first plugged in, but we had to go back and revise some numbers. We didn't have enough in overlay. I didn't, I had had a hundred and fifty in overlay last year, and I have seventy-two left, although I do have two ATB cases, one with Highland Commons and one with 100 River Road, Berlin Village, either of which I think will get to court, but I don't see the Board of Assessors moving on their denials in either case. So, so we had a lower figure in there. Permanent revenue has been pretty strict about using, they have to have a minimum of a three-year average. So we needed to bump that up, which changed my original estimates.
How much did we have to bump it up?
I had to have a minimum of a hundred and fifty-two, and I only had a hundred on the line, because I didn't really think we needed that much, so.
You've gotten down to the seventies, you bumped it up to a hundred, and now you want me to bump it up to a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. So, again, it's one of those things, they won't allow you to be certified if there's, because what they found were, it's one of those places where you can shortchange, so you save the taxpayer some money on the front end, because you can deficit spend.
Right.
And it was taken advantage of, so they want you to have a three-year average number, so that changed.
Okay.
And the other thing we did was, we made a modification to the receipts. We had an estimate in there last year, two hundred and fifty thousand for the permits and fees.
How much again?
Two hundred and fifty, last year. And we actually hit two fifty-three. So June had put two fifty on that line. But the problem is, I don't think we're going to hit two fifty on that line, looking at what's in the plan for permits for this coming year. So you don't want to shortchange yourself in that line item, so.
So we, you feel that we overestimated?
Yeah, yeah. So when we reduce that, then your residential rate goes back up a bit, so when we're, you know, when everything gets added back in, so.
And you dropped that from two fifty to two hundred? So basically, you have a net reduction in projected income, correct?
Yes.
And then that added in is what just made, has had the impact?
Makes the change.
Okay.
So instead of the twenty-three ninety-one on commercial with a fifteen eighty-eight residential rate, the new residential rate, keeping the twenty-three ninety-one, would be sixteen dollars and ten cents.
Which is?
It's not on this sheet, because I didn't want to print all that paper back out, but that's kind of where it will be. Which is on the average tax bill, a two hundred dollar savings.
Say that again?
So if you're using the sixteen, our residential rate last year was sixteen sixty-seven.
Got it, never mind, I was looking at the speaker here.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what it was, and then when we made the adjustments.
It would have been even a little more favorable.
Yes.
But it's, okay, got it?
Yeah. We get back up a little.
So you're going to a residential rate of sixteen?
Ten.
Ten. Which is on the previous page, sixteen point one. One point two nine shift?
Well, then, those, yeah, it's a one point two nine shift, yeah, yeah.
And then the commercial is?
Sorry, where'd you keep sixteen ten?
Twenty-three ninety-one.
The sixteen ten here?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. But you can't, you, I mean, you can't use the commercial number, but it is a one point two nine shift, and it would be sixteen ten residential and twenty-three ninety-one commercial. Just to give you an idea of.
So commercial stays the same.
Maintained.
And residential goes down.
Because no evaluations were adjusted.
Yep, gotcha.
So I'm planning on bringing you the commercial rates in the neighboring towns at the classification hearing. Your small commercial exemption, I'm assuming you're going to maintain. I have been apprised that you will have an audience on that, that evening, from our local business owners, who didn't know they were receiving a credit, but, so maybe it will limit the population of participants.
I'm sorry.
The credit is on the bill, but they didn't know what the credit was for, they were just glad to get it, but they didn't know what it was for.
So they're coming here to be sure, they don't want it, or they, they want it?
Well, they just think the commercial rate is too high, and because they have to pay some of it, that it really ought to be, they, they understand there can't be more of an adjustment, but you ought to be lowering things kind of equally, because they have to shield the burden.
Okay.
Okay, and somebody is organizing that, so. Let's see, what else?
Does that affect your decision as to whether you want us to do it on the 8th, when I'm gone, or the 15th?
Oh, boy.
We'll let Walter sit in his chair, because he's the vice chair, ah, yes, you have to act as chairman.
So the only other good news about this is that if all these numbers stay the same, we will have five hundred and forty-eight thousand of excess levy capacity. Last year, we had sixty-four thousand.
Yep, well, we anticipated some more headroom.
Yes, we did. The FinCom's talking about underrides.
No.
So we're going to be.
Under rides?
The financial team is going to be organized to.
I think they need to look up what an underride is, because I don't think they're clear on the concept.
Yeah, well, that's why I thought maybe it would be beneficial if the FAC met with the FinCom at one of their meetings, and kind of talked about the planning.
What is an underride?
Well, it's when you give.
You lower your.
You lower your tax levy. But once you do it, it's done.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it is incredibly rare to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's overrides that bring it up, but there's another way, it's, what do they call it, when it's just for one item?
It's a capital over, versus an operating.
But this is actually taking a levy limit that you would otherwise be allowed by law, and limiting it by town vote. I mean, you always limit it by town vote, because we vote what we spend, but this puts one more hurdle in place.
Like two and a half back in eighty-one.
Yes, this is like negative two and a half, two and a half.
So we do have a lot of money articles we were talking about, so there's some serious planning for us.
A lot of money around, people see it.
You know, we had a lot of money when the Solomon Pond Mall came in, and I was on the FinCom then, and it stayed fairly high until we hit that big drop in two thousand, two thousand, when we had that big slump, and then we slowly used it up. But I think that with proper planning, that we can all contain ourselves.
Yeah.
Yep.
So is there anything else that you would like for me to be prepared with at the classification hearing, other than my usual?
So for the summary, house values are staying the same as they were, and that goes for the same for commercial?
Yes.
This tax rate stays the same, but their total tax bills should decrease?
The residential.
Residential.
Yes.
But for commercial, they stay the same rate?
Same rate, same bill.
Same bill, so it's just, it's not going down, but it's not going up?
Right.
Okay.
It should be used to.
I mean, excuse me?
They should be used to.
Well, I mean, I think the discussion that the board had before was, well, if they're paying, you know, we have these split projects, and they're paying twenty-eight dollars a thousand in Marlboro, and twenty, plus twenty-eight or twenty-six in Hudson, I'm, I'm maybe misspeaking on. and 20 plus, 28 or 26 in Hudson, I'm maybe misspeaking on dollars here, but it was considerably more than the Town of Berle. And I'll have those numbers for you at the meeting, that, you know, do commercials usually on the same tax bill in the following year? I don't know. So, and if you do something different, like increase the commercial rate, then taxpayers have a bigger, the residential ratepayers have a bigger savings.
Well, I think that residential is going to be getting a savings, because Tejant comes totally online, I believe. Is it, is that true?
Next year or the year after?
Okay.
Yeah.
They haven't done any, they haven't done the final bar?
No, no.
Sorry?
Yeah, I think Dennis said that he was hopeful it was going to be next year, but...
All right.
That's what you were thinking?
It's a good place to start.
Oh, you mean?
Let's, let's, let's keep the 8th open, I'll check in the office tomorrow, see if I can, I'm supposed to be in New York, but I'll see if I can delay that and go down on Tuesday morning, because I do think it's good to have the whole board here. And I'm, I'm not doing anything like important, like vacation, I'm just going down to New York, so, okay?
All right. Do you have some time to think about it, if you have some details?
No, no, I'll let you guys know, you know, tomorrow.
Okay. Well, gosh, I hope so.
So, to be ready on the 8th, you need to have all this pilot stuff approved?
Yep, I need the signatures, that's all, signatures, and then they'll go on.
But we'd be ready on the 8th, if I sign them, like, we get them in and I sign them on Wednesday, you're ready, right?
Well, I mean, hopefully...
We have to go through the DOR, right?
Yeah, they're just, supposedly, they've looked at everything, but they won't give the old "Hi" sign until they see the document.
Well, yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you all for all of your efforts.
All right.
Great, congrats on finishing the pilot and all that.
Yeah, it's a good team effort this year.
Yeah, excellent. And you were happy with Kulpman on this?
Well, yeah, I, like you said, well, once you get it, it's, it's good.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Yep, okay.
And then they'll, I have to just remind them that the $5,000 check is coming with the signature page.
Their $5,000 check?
They're paying, yeah, they're reimbursing, they'll cut a check for $5,000 for legal expenses.
The proponent is cutting the check, okay, great, thank you. And when I were running a little bit behind, my apologies.
Before I introduce you to the gentleman to my left, I just want to give you an update on the River Bridge project. Some things that are going on down there.
To me, the gentleman on your right.
Depends on which way you sit, my friend. All right, right now, this is, the River Bridge project is, is a goal.
And by that we mean?
The grant will be, the contract for the grant, which should be signed by the end of this week, to give to you people to sign at the end of next week. And I've been nervous about the whole thing until I see that we are, that is going to happen, I talk to the state on Friday, and everything, everything has now been entered into the computer, now it's just a matter of the, the state people looking it over and getting it accepted, and then we will have the approval to, we already have the award, now the contract will release the money.
Yep, and that money is this figure?
That money is that figure, and I just wanted, and I just wanted to show you, because what, what I'm...
Because we're televising this, it's about 1 million, 528,230.
Right. And the quick summary breaks it down, this will pay for the engineering, police details, construction, the whole thing is broke down kind of easily. And what we had discussed before is, we're going to need a clerk of the works.
Yes.
So, I am now going to introduce you to the owner of Chapel Engineering, which I recommend to be our clerk of the works, David Chappell Chapel.
I'm Dave Chappell.
The owner.
Hi, Tom Andrew.
Hi.
Nice to see you again.
Hi. We're over in Marlboro.
Who's this guy, yeah?
This is Mark Johnson.
Very nice to meet you.
He's our candidate for clerk of the works, but just to give you a quick recap, we're in Marlboro, we're a small engineering firm, about 20 people. And we do several structural land surveying, and we do a lot of transportation work of this type. And we were the design engineers for the, for the River Bridge project, for the roadway portion of it. And we've, we've finished that now, and we've got this thing going into construction. So, the next step really is to sign the contract. Once you've, once you've got the funds, the funds committed, then you could sign the construction contract, which, which we have a contractor lined up, as you know. And, and we've, our candidate for clerk of the works is Mark, and his duty is, basically, is to make sure the work is done per the plan's specs, to make decisions, recommendations as far as pay requ, pay requisitions for the contractor, and, and to make technical decisions here and there. And we're, in talking to Keith, we're proposing him for, for full-time, when the activity is, is heavy, and he may, you know, there may be times when the activity's not heavy, where he doesn't have to be there all the time, but that's something we'll work with Keith on.
How long are we figuring this is going to take, three months?
Three to four months.
So, then, then it's going to be a break, and then, when spring comes, you're going to finish it, the paving, or?
Finish, probably go on the spring, and the landscape will probably be in the spring. Just, just so that you know how we can pay these people, there is, in the grant, there's a way to pay an engineer, okay? Now, we don't have, what, what, these people have already contracted with River Bridge to do the prelim on that. Now, we need somebody to make sure that, that design gets installed properly. So, I recommend these people seeing that they designed it, now they're going to make sure that the contractor does exactly what's on the plan. So, and right now, we can pay, the grant can pay for engineering.
Yep.
But the only way it can pay is to pay the engineer. Right now, these people have a contract with Matt Senni, we don't need the Sennys anymore. This contract is for the Town of Berle.
Yep.
Now, we need somebody to, we need to pay somebody to watch our backs.
Yep.
This will be these people, and I talked to the state, and the way that we can do that is to hire an engineering company to be the clerk of the works. Then, there's enough money in the grant to pay for the engineering.
Okay.
The only, it's not even only, what we have to do is, we have to take Matt Senni's contract, which has already been done. But the only way the grant can pay it is to actually, that, that contract has to be changed to the Town of Berle. Is that somewhat near clear? What kind of questions you got on that?
I just, Mark, on, on this now, clerk of the works, you see that the engineering is done according to the plans and everything, but how about the quality of the work being done?
Mainly, it's to make sure it's built as per the plans, also as per Massachusetts specification of bridges and highways.
I mean, compacting earth and everything else, we have our parking lot here, and, you know, curb stones are sunk in the gullies in the, because compacting wasn't done properly, and the curbs weren't set properly.
Correct.
So, we don't want to see that sound.
That's the main reason why generally, you know, I've done, I've been on a couple of Mass Works projects in the past, and what it is, is, I mean, I'm there for quality control, I'm there, basically, the town is our client, so therefore, I'm looking after the town's best interest, I'm making sure that it's built exactly as it's drawn.
Right.
If there's any problems in the field, then I can make recommendations, if it's something that is beyond my scope, I can call back to the office, and the team of engineers there, they can, they can rework everything.
Sure.
Generally, it doesn't get to, to that.
Yeah.
I also, you know, end up producing a daily report, tracking exactly how the project is going. I have a copy of the bid, to make sure of tracking every, every unit that comes up. And therefore, we can also, and that will help out when there's pay recs that go up, because it's going to have to match what I have, otherwise, they don't get paid.
We have to watch the money very carefully, because we know that's the money, that's all the money we have, so...
That rotary down there now, that's held up pretty good, all the years, I mean, curbs are all good, it's nice, you know, level. Round about there?
I don't know who did the work, but obviously, it was one of the people who worked.
I remember when it was a triangle down there.
I've seen a picture of it, but I don't know.
And the amount of the engineering content, is that the 113?
Yes.
Okay.
And most of the design work, it's already been done.
Right.
That's about half of that.
Okay. And then the rest will be oversight?
Yeah, that would be part, most part.
So, are you going to be back in the spring to finish?
Yes.
Okay.
And that'll be a judgment call, if it, if there's enough work, if there's enough little work that can be done, that I can oversee, and finish the little bit that's left, we won't need him. But I'm, I'm assuming we probably will need him to break ground in the spring to get it going, and then we can kind of play it by ear at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, we have not seen the contractor schedule yet, but I'm assuming he's, he should be revealed tomorrow, there's a pre-construction meeting tomorrow.
We have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, 10 o'clock, so a lot of these things will be ironed out tomorrow.
Okay, and we are being asked today to approve a construction?
Con, well, it, it's a transfer of a contract on the Sennys, so the Sennys have nothing to do with what we're doing anymore. And so, that way, see, he made a contract with them, all right, because we have to get this thing started. Now, we need to pay it, because they did it for the Town of Berle. Got you?
Yeah, no, I got it.
So, now, the only way we can pay it is if we have a contract. Now, the contract, I don't know, if you have a copy of it?
Yeah, I have a copy of it, but it's basically, it's basically an engineered contract between me and the Sennys.
Okay.
So, what happens is, I'm...
All right, I was actually talking about that we're also doing that.
Okay, we can't, we can't sign that, we have 10 days to sign the next step to that, all right? Because we're on a tight constraint.
Yeah.
You shouldn't sign any contracts until we make sure we have that in mind. Right now, it looks like I will know that by next Friday, okay, for sure. So, what has to happen with that is, that's going to come, he's all set right now.
Next Friday, meaning?
Not, 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 not.
That is coming, but the following?
Yeah. In other words, it started with 10 days from the 18th.
Yeah.
The UEL had 10 days to get his bonds and his certificates to us.
Yeah.
To over, to look at, to make sure that everything is okay.
Yeah.
Then, we have 10, that's the 10 days, that gets to the 18th.
Yes.
Then, the board has 10 days to review all of his information, and we have 10 days to give it back, that's not just in stone, you can go a little bit further. So, that's a total of 20 days.
This is the construction contract?
This is to sign the construction contract with UEL.
Right, okay.
So...
I actually understood a lot of that, where, where I was going with this is, do you guys review construction contracts, or do you look at this, or are we relying on?
We, we basically produced the construction contract.
They did, they actually did.
This instruction?
Yes, they did the documents.
Okay, all right. I just want to be sure that somebody who's on our side of this...
This is basically the construction contract here.
Okay? All right.
Yes, they designed the whole thing.
Okay, that's, that's really what I was actually leading up to.
Okay, when the, when the, these people gave all the, all the construction documents and plans to be bid on, that one came from Chapel Engineering.
Yes, no, I understood that, all I was saying was, as part of the fee and everything, do you guys either, you know, put together or review the construction contract? That's what I was asking, or that's what I was, getting ready to ask, will you?
In this case, we have, we have already done that.
Okay, okay. But we don't have, we don't and will not take action on this tonight.
Not quite yet.
Tonight, we're being asked to sign the engineering contract.
To approve the engineer, to approve Chapel Engineering as working for us.
And I will draw, I will draw up a contract.
That says Berle instead of Senni.
So, we're, we're being asked to approve your appointment, not to sign the actual contract?
Correct, correct.
Okay? All right. Are there any other questions?
No.
Comments? All right, here, yes?
No, no. No.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Was I stepping out of line, or were you going to say something?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay. All right, then I will accept a motion to appoint the, your, your official name?
Chapel Engineering Associates.
Okay, to appoint Chapel Engineering Associates as the engineers and supervisors of this project, first onto a contract to be established later with the town.
So, move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Very nice, thank you.
Thanks.
I will try to make that mean.
Just don't fuck, Mark. Don't go on to... Somebody push you around.
If you see what video is, you got connections here, right? I don't want to slide at all, we're going to be okay.
Good night, thank you, guys. All right, you guys playing musical chairs up there?
Sorry.
I can hum, and then stop suddenly, I feel like... All right, let's see here.
Just, so, you know, Larry was concerned about getting out of here, because he's going to that training tomorrow, you know, in Franklin, and so, wanted to get out, but you're on at 8:30, so you're not going to have to sit and wait until 9:30 or something.
Thank you.
And, you're Josh Namorin, yes, you're on the agenda for 8, and I like to try to stick to the, due to the agenda, in case there's anybody who wants to come, okay? So, then, we, I guess we'll just pick up on other stuff while we're... All right, next is, okay, let's start here, closure of the Selectment's Office on 8/26, this will require a vote. The reason for this is that Mary, together with a lot of other people, are going in for the GOTMS permitting systems training for the day. I take a vote to that effect, a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, is this just one day, Mary?
Yeah.
I thought it was two or three days.
I wouldn't go, it's a one day.
One day, okay, yeah.
One day for Julie, myself who's training Julie, and three inspectors.
Okay.
Other people on this floor will go for half-day training when they get there, but that's, that's going to be a separate kind of unit. I'll probably go on that, too, actually.
Yep, okay. Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is Selectment attendance at 8/26, River Bridge pre-construction meeting.
I told Keith I'd go.
Okay, so Judy will go for that?
When is it?
10 o'clock.
Down the...
Do you want to go, too, because we can continue the meeting?
I might just sit, since we don't, we, we won't talk about it, I'll just listen. I, I probably won't.
I'm not going to discuss it.
I, I guess, what I'm saying, if there's two of you there, and you feel there's any action, we could continue the meeting, and no, okay?
I don't think there's going to be.
I don't have any problem with the two of you going, obviously. All right.
What date was that, I'm sorry?
Tomorrow.
It was 8/26.
Cleverly devised, so you can't go.
Okay. And data system coordinator?
You know, I, I've been trying to, I don't, I don't approve of this at all, so...
Okay, well, I'll be working on it.
Been working on it, but... Can I put something in, in the middle of that, that kind of goes with this? A new agenda item? A new agenda item? Would you allow me to?
Sure, yeah, we got a little time.
Here, I have, um, it's the data system study groups.
Okay.
So this group will develop a strategic information technology plan. The plan would include an assessment of the current conditions, recommended current actions, prioritization of actions, and recommendations of a cost-effective five-year strategic plan, which would incorporate future growth and evolving technology. Volunteers should have knowledge in one or more of these areas: email systems, data storage, network design, data security. We're looking for a design that would incorporate quality, reliability, and efficiency.
Doesn't add to be posted?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a good idea. We've talked about the need to...
Sounds pretty powerful to me.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I would, uh, accept a motion to issue a call for of data system study group and to post this for volunteers.
Did you have a number of members?
So move.
No.
No, no.
I mean, let's see what we get.
Yeah, let's see what we get. Uh, second.
All right, any further discussion? I would just say that I think it's, this is, this is good and it's the way to go, and, um, you know, I'm sure that one of the things they'll look at is Richard's, you know, job description, but I think it is time we had a broader group look at it, and I hope there will be some interested people out there who'd be willing to serve.
By application, using a volunteer form to the selectman's office, okay?
Yeah.
Cut-off date, or not really? Want roll-in, open enrollment, or?
Give it until?
I think we'd like to have them up and running by the first of October.
Yeah.
So you want applications by the first of October?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Pull up a chair. All right, so then there's a motion to, uh, form it and issue this as the statement call for volunteers. Any further discussion? Any further questions, hearing none? I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is that the license transfer?
It's the license stuff, but then there was some other stuff on the back, I just want to be sure.
That, that's the contract.
Okay.
So that doesn't have any...
That's the notice of warrant, okay, so that's just standard, okay? All right. The, um, next thing on, uh, on the agenda is, um, discussions whether the cable advisory commission's recommendation on the charter to Comcast license transfer. We're already gonna have a meeting on this, right?
Yes, October...
October sixth, at seven fifteen. And so what exactly?
They wanted to know if...
Who is they?
Cable Advisory Committee wanted to know if, you know, ordinarily, they'd be charged with reviewing whether to renew Charter's license, but they wanted to know whether or not you want a recommendation to them, or whether the selectmen should vote to approve the FCC Form 394, which is basically a resolution that the selectmen could sign and file with the FCC that would put the, the selectmen's stamp of approval on the license transfer from Charter to Comcast.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Do you feel like you need them to weigh in on that?
I would certainly like their opinion. My, that's my opinion.
Yeah, me, too. There's a lot in the paper about it, you can't, it's tough to, it sounds like a fad to complete anyway. So we will.
Yeah, and I think, I guess I'd ask them to do a re-presentation if they would, on the sixth of October. That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
We have, um, a town clerk request to send, um, a dog bylaw revision to Town Council for review.
Well, I looked at it quickly, but I really didn't, you know, study it out, and I wanted to talk to LOEs about it, so I'm not ready to vote on it.
I took it that all of these changes were state mandated?
Oh, were they mandated?
Colton and Paige, literature is actually included in there. Greg Corbo of Colton and Paige gave a workshop to, I think it was town clerks, advising on how you're supposed to update your dog bylaws. So she's acting on advice at that level of Town Council, but she took a stab at rewriting the bylaw, and she let the Town Council look at it whenever there's a town meeting, just for review now.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with that.
So this is just to get a review?
Yep.
I have no problem either.
Okay, I think you can record a favorable vote for referring that. We have a note here. Uh, I mean, hot water, about something, Mary?
Oh, the hot water heater?
Yeah.
Just shy of nine thousand dollars to get that emergency replacement hot water heater in the basement. And so, um, there's a little bit of a...
There's a question.
...connect as to whether or not you, you approve a reserve fund transfer now when an unexpected, unanticipated expense pops out mid or early in the municipal expenses budget? Or do you wait until the end of the year, when it's zeroed out?
Uh, doesn't really matter.
Well, what June says is that it's just a change in procedure from the old FinCom, which predates me, I really don't know, but she said the old FinCom would have approved a reserve fund transfer of something of that size unexpected when it occurs, versus waiting until the end of the year, and all the nickel and dime municipal building expenses just start coming in. It's a whole bunch of separate reserve fund transfers.
It's a lot more work to do it this way, and if you simply do, the reserve fund is for unexpected expenses and emergencies.
Of course.
So what they're saying is, you just have to spend all your money, and then at the end of the year, when you're out of money, you're gonna have to ask for a reserve fund transfer for...
The amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Well, theoretically.
Yes.
When, why don't you, you know, I don't know.
Well, what if we just, you know, didn't allow it, and then, um, that might be a little pressure to not spend so much?
Whichever way it's gonna be, it's just that it's a shift, and it's not documented anywhere. There's no procedure on how to build a uniform...
I would suggest this, I would suggest that we request a reserve fund transfer. When, when is FinCom meeting next, and then one of us could go ahead and talk to FinCom about this.
I think they're, um...
Ask the transfer now.
They, they had it in there.
Yeah, and then talk to them.
I think they're meeting on the second and fourth Wednesdays in the month.
How do you feel about that? Requesting it now?
Oh, me?
And then go in there, well, anybody, that's, what do you guys think about it?
I think that's fine, 'cause I won't be here when they meet.
What is the total amount in that?
Ninety, oh, in the, in the line item?
Yeah.
Oh, total, I'd have to get the budget.
Oh, I mean, tell within...
That's the budget that includes, elevator inspection, I mean, includes, it's like thirty thousand, but it's...
So there, there wouldn't be enough wiggle room in there to absorb that amount?
We budgeted that pretty tight.
Tightly, okay.
And I think, but what Judy's saying, and I think it's a good point, is right now, we know what it is. We know it's one unexpected iota that will restore us back to budget, as opposed to running out of money and then having like thirty stop things that we have to document.
And then they only meet twice a month, and it, it totally becomes very awkward.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
I think we were looking more...
So I would accept a vote to, um...
We can do that after.
I would accept a vote to request a reserve fund transfer in the amount of ninety-five hundred dollars, and we'll try to arrange for one of us to attend, who's around to attend, the FinCom, to talk to them about that.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
It's less than ninety-five, so you wanna say up to ninety-five, and by signature by the clerk or something, to get it over there?
I thought this was ninety-five hundred.
I don't have paperwork for you to sign for a reserve fund transfer.
I understand, but ninety-five hundred is the figure we've been given and just voted.
Yeah, it's less than that now, it came at like, it's eighty-nine hundred or something, it may be with... I heard the actual piece, the actual equipment was eighty-nine hundred, I'm not sure if the labor is a factor to that.
And he wanted to be paid?
Of, of, of up to ninety-five hundred, uh, dollars, okay, that'd be the motion.
Okay.
No further discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, we, sorry, to be running, coming in late. Please, uh, come up, we have an appointment with Josh and Anne Marie Wolf. We're having Bound and Sons' activity on Highland Street.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Douglas Roll, I'm attorney in Marlborough, and I represent Josh and Anne Marie. If I could, I'd like to give you a copy of my appearance and a short, um, set of documents that Mr. Wolf has prepared.
Okay.
And if there are other persons that would like to have some extra copies here.
I know Mr. Bound is here, so I'm sure he'd like one. All right, so please, um, feel free to begin.
Again, I represent Josh and Anne Marie Wolf, who live at one thirty-six Highland...
And also please feel free to take a seat.
Who live at one thirty-six Highland Street, and next door is Duncan and Karen Baum at one twenty-eight Highland Street. And I think you're probably familiar that they, the Bams in nineteen ninety-seven received a special permit. Their application for that special permit to the zoning board was for an addition to a non-conforming, pre-existing welding fabrication, repair, and service shop. After hearing on May fourteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, the zoning board granted the enlargement of a pre-existing, non-conforming use, a welding shop engaged in the repair and fabrication of various items. And then they put four conditions on the permit, uh, which were a little bit of a challenge in that they're very broad. One particularly says that they, um, should, uh, do this work to the extent possible within the proposed instruction. Structure, and, and of course, that's a wide-open statement as to, you know, as to what that means. But going back to their original application, the original shop was four hundred and sixty-one point two-five square feet. It was twenty by twenty-two. They were given the right to expand it a hundred percent, and they did that plus a lot, because the new shop is twenty-eight by forty, which is eleven hundred and twenty square feet, almost triple the size. But, um, historically, and we'll go to the fact that Mr. and Mrs. Wolf, when that application came in, supported it. And they're here tonight not to have a Hatfield and McCoy-type thing, or even the DeMullis cousin. It's a matter of, they want the welding shop to succeed and to continue. The problem appears that when Officer Baum retired from the police department, he, uh, expanded his hours of operation because he had more time. And in doing so, it appears that he is not doing necessarily welding fabrication, but is doing service and repair of vehicles. And that gets to the, um, types of vehicles, and if you look, um, on page three of, of the materials that Josh put together, and page four are what was in nineteen ninety-nine, or nineteen ninety-seven approved, and in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand was there. On page five, you, you see in the backyard a street sweeper. I know he has a farm, and we're not interested in his farm equipment, but I don't, I think it's difficult to conceive how he would be using a street sweeper for his farm use. Then, on page six, there is a picture of a trailer, which is a trailer used for the transportation of large equipment, and, and it's a, quote, "oversized load." And Highland Street is not exactly a wide thoroughfare, it's a narrow country road. And the use of an oversized trailer to bring in equipment that he's gonna work on, we think is beyond, um, what should be permitted on the town road, and to a small shop like his. The other pictures continue to show the large number of vehicles and equipment that's there. And, and again, we feel that this is prohibited under the original permit, that, um, long-term packing of the equipment to be worked on shall be minimized. Again, difficult to define what minimized means, but I think for reasonable people to get along, there, there should be less than what is there now. On page ten, if you look at the top, that was the picture of the garage in nineteen ninety-seven at the time that the hundred percent expansion was approved. The bottom of the page is the picture of the new expanded garage. And again, the Wolves are not taking issue with the fact that that building was put out and the size that it is. They do take issue with the expanded hours and the expanded, what they believe is the expanded use of ma- of making repairs other than welding and fabrication. Their position is that the original application, as granted, was for welding shop, not for a repair, a general repair shop to repair equipment of all types if it's not, if there is not some welding service included in it. And that, that basically is their problem. They, they, they do have a problem with the noise, and again, there's a noise ordinance, and, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Wolf is measuring that. And I think if it continues, we'll have a formal complaint on that. I guess the real purpose in being here tonight is to inform you of it, and I guess to, in choosing this way to inform the Bams, that they want some relief, and they want them to, in fact, comply with the special permit as issued. And we're kind of using this board, there is no actual manner. When this went back to these zoning boards in two thousand and two, the zoning board kinda said, "We don't have any authority to enforce this." So, uh, at this point, we're here asking, uh, to present this to you, and hopefully, Mr. Brandt, the police, and everybody else could be informed, and, um, we can resolve this without going any further. That's hopefully where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any members of the board have any questions as a result of that presentation? I'm gonna ask if there are other people who want to speak in along with Judy, but I know I have...
Honors. Josh, have you approached the Bams about this?
Um, we talked a little about the sound, and, oh, the fence, and there've been other letters of complaints on the smokestack, certified letters, there's a whole history of this.
Oh, so you've exhausted the personal contact, yeah?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I find, I waited, it's been twenty years plus, and I finally had the call for this, for the noise.
Are there any other comments from?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, uh, I was not aware of a noise issue. And the only time I've had communication with Josh was after the police cruiser arrived. I didn't even know you were out there, and, uh, so the next day...
I'm sorry, I'm...
The police cruiser arrived, and we had a noise complaint, and I said, "Oh, boy."
Were you driving it?
Huh?
I'm not.
No, 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 I was officer shot.
Oh, were you?
And I had a conversation the next day, Josh, and said, "Come on, what's the problem?" He said, "Noise." So I have taken steps... So I have taken steps to mitigate that, including buying myself a meter, so that I can ensure that the noise at the property line isn't violating this CMRI quotes. I just wish she'd come before I called the police cruiser, but that's the way it happens.
I've lived next door to you for twenty years. There's been many, many occasions where I could not either open my kitchen window or go outside and enjoy my garden or sit and read a book because of the noise coming from your property. I would say rarely a day has gone by that there hasn't been some noise there.
I'd like to say something too.
Please.
They have a machine that shakes soil against the rock soap. And they were testing it, repairing it, I don't know what they were doing it. And the noise was so loud, it shook my walls, and I still have cracked walls from that. They've dropped the front-end bucket loaders that I show there. When the bucket hits the ground, twenty-five feet from my property line, I'm sure they heard it, I heard it, and the neighbors down the street heard it, okay? When you drop a bucket on a large front-end loader, everyone hears it. I think the noise has been self-evident. And I might add, on my specific noise complaint, when I heard the noise and I got the painful ears, I had ringing ears for an hour, when I, after the third bang, I screamed at the top of my lungs, and said, please be quiet, okay? And I had enough and it crossed the line. And I believe that's all in the complaint. This has been going on for a long time.
And it doesn't matter about the weather. This goes on all year long.
I think it's self-evident.
I'd have to say that ninety-five percent of our work is elsewhere. It's elsewhere. Welding work is elsewhere.
If I was on the Board of Appeals when we granted you that initial permit, Duncan, I would never have thought, if I thought that it would have turned out the way it is. I mean, when you drive by, there's just grown, there's all kinds of heavy equipment there. It's way beyond a welding shop.
It's, the equipment is all fine.
It's not some of the stuff I've seen there, from back coast to, it, the amount of work, I mean, it's beyond reason. It's an unreasonable thing to have in a residential area and on a residential zone. I mean, can't you do something to reduce it a little bit or organize it or? They're not trying to put you out of business, but I drive, I can remember when Wheeler Hill was like a storybook land up there. And you go up there now, and from one end to the other, it's just clutter and, but I can see the noise. I haven't heard it, but going by there, to be quite honest with you, I was expecting some sort of complaint to come along for a couple of years now. And it finally has, just looking at the operation. I mean, there's got to be some reasonableness here.
Thank you, Walter. I believe, I'm just going to say something.
Of course.
Thank you. You just said all that equipment is farm equipment? What is coming in on the oversized load trailer, and where's it coming from?
The oversized load trailer was a job we were evaluating for repair.
Where did it come from? Was it a farm?
No, it was a customer.
But if he's welding, that's perfectly fine. I mean, he has a welding permit.
That is, that's correct. Okay, but the work he was doing on the equipment that came in, the oversized trailer?
Nothing came in?
Nothing came in on the oversized trailer?
You're saying the oversized trailer was itself a repair or?
The oversized trailer-
Work project that you had in for assessment, is that what you're saying?
A customer wanted us to evaluate the trailer for repair.
The oversized trailer is outside?
Yes, that's what I was asking. And he decided that it wasn't worth the money. He's going to scrap the trailer and buy a new one.
So he's going to take it away?
It is gone.
And it's not considered an oversized trailer. It has a sign on the back that says oversized load.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, and we're not really, one, we're not the board to get down in the weeds on that. Two, you know, I think we could spend all night talking about agreement on details. I am hearing some willingness on the part of neighbors to talk about this and see what adjustments could be made in terms of, you know, sort of outside storage, I'm hearing is an issue. Noise is, you know, is distinctly an issue. Hours of operation, I'm hearing, what are your hours of operation now?
We could usually go from either seven or eight o'clock in the morning, and we're exhausted by five, if we're at the shop. Now, we do leave early in the morning.
No, we're talking about work you're doing there. I mean, what you do off, what you do away is never-
And usually, if we're going to start early in the morning, like seven, we move everything into the shop, so it won't be noisy.
And just, and I'm not, I'm only going to ask a couple of questions because I say I think, you know, this is really sort of a sounding issue and building inspector. And your understanding of the hours of operation were what?
It was part-time. When I moved there, Duncan was a full-time police officer, Eric was a minor.
And the, the-
Permit?
The permit, does that give operating hours?
It does not.
No, it's not. And I'd like to add, the smokestack was not shown on the plan that was approved, I believe.
What is the smokestack?
It's for the oil burn.
That's for the, the heat, for the heat?
Yeah.
You know, I'm hearing a willingness of neighbors to-
Well, I don't want trouble with my neighbors.
To talk. Yeah, no, I understand. I would certainly encourage that because there's nothing like getting government involved to make a complicated situation even more complicated. So I would, I would strongly urge that perhaps, you know, you guys sit down with a cup of coffee and talk about, you know, what could be done.
Would have that sell?
Yeah, I mean, that's the sort of thing, I mean, you know, I think, well, you know, I-
Well, it wasn't one, was, when the special permit was issued, the Wolves didn't want a fence there, they wanted the trees. And then at some point, they wanted a fence, and I just said, Larry told me about it. I said to Larry, if I put up a fence, don't let me take it down. And I got one partway down the property. Now, I will continue it down to where the abridges are really filled in. But I'll have to go in between the trees because I don't want to build the big screws.
Well, I think these are the kind of conversations that it would be-
Is that all right?
No, this isn't the place to have it. I think you guys, you guys should talk.
It would have to be a twenty-foot fence. Besides the vehicles they're bringing in now, huge front-end loaders, huge dump trucks, and they're right on my property line. I don't see any way to solve this out.
Again, I mean, you've got a, I, I think that you need to, I mean, you've got a fair amount of land there, and, I mean, I think you guys, the first thing to do is, I would truly encourage you guys to talk. Because once you get the building inspector, the ZBA, a bunch of lawyers on this, it's not going to make it any better. So I would give it a good cut at that. We're here, maybe, you know, as a sounding board. We have really very little official role in this, you know, in this kind of, you know, enforcement. Larry has some role in terms of zoning enforcement officer, including permits and so on. I think what we've seen is, it's, you know, it is a sort of a general, slightly loosey-goosey permit, and I think that that makes it, you know, all the more important, you know, for neighbors to talk about things. I mean, I've had, just recently, you know, I live next to, you know, National Lumber, and I've had to do that, you know, with, I've had to do that with my neighbors. And it means, you know, you really have to sit down and, you know, with the idea of let's address the issue, let's, let's look at a good balancing of things. And if one of us could be of some help, you know, in an unofficial way, I think we'd be pleased to do that.
Well, what authority would the Board of Selectmen have, period?
As I said, we really don't have much except a moral authority to suggest that neighbors talk about it and sort it out.
Well, I've been listening to the conversation and somewhat disappointed in this. Neither you nor Judy would tolerate this, if it was in your, if it was in your neighbor's yard. This type of thing, this is why, when the Board of Appeal gives out a permit, they ought to be very, very careful. This type of thing happens all the time. I would be appalled. If I was a neighbor there, you two would seem like a couple of kids, I'm telling you. I mean, I wouldn't put up with it, on way or another. It's ridiculous. It's way, way out of control. The appearance of it, the looks of it, I haven't heard the noise, but looking at the equipment, looking at the activities, you're suffering with unnecessary noise in a residential district in a relatively nicely kept home of your own. And I think, I think Duncan, and I think Eric, I think you owe to these people and owe it to the town, frankly, to try and do something about it. Organize it, for one thing, but it's really, if that was beside me, whoa.
Walter, I'd like to correct you one thing.
Okay.
It's residential agricultural, so.
All right, you're faking it. I'll tell you, with, with the fire machinery, no, no, wait a minute. You want to duck it and swab it off the table. I don't do that. The fire machinery, you throw a few pieces of fire machinery in there, that's fine. In my opinion, it's a guise for the other activities. And I think you ought to be honest with it, and I think you ought to respect the town, respect the bylaws, respect your neighbors, and try and straighten it out a little bit. We're not trying to put you out of business. Is it true, is it true you heard a comment on the other side of the fence you said in there that you heard a comment, how would they like that noise?
All day long, yep.
Well, how can, I, I'm trying to see how you can sit down together at this point. But if you do, just be assured that this third of the board doesn't just want to get it off the table and get it out of the way. I think you've got a point, and I think you deserve some consideration. And if you can get together and sit down and have coffee, see what you can come up with, but, and I'd be willing to sit in with you, but it's, the situation up on Wheeler Hill there now is, in a lot of instances, is not good.
Thanks very much.
And I would just like to emphasize in suggesting that having come here, having asked, talked about this, knowing it's on the radar screen, knowing in fact that you guys have administrative steps, you could go to the building inspector and make a complaint that it was in violation of the permit, and one can go that route. I was only suggesting that now that I hope everybody's attention has gotten, that we try, you know, to sit down and talk about it and organize it in a way that's balanced. But that is available, and if something is in violation of a special permit, it is in violation of a special permit.
And thank you very much.
All right? But, you know, again, my feeling is, I have a strong bias toward neighbors trying to work it out.
And I do too, but there is one thing the Board could do that I would ask for.
And, but absolutely, there, there's a, there's a process available. I was also saying, it's not really the Board of Selectmen who are part of that process. We have some moral authority here, whatever, but you know that your, your recourse is to, you know, to the building inspector and so on, okay?
One thing I would ask that the Board might be able to do is, historically, when we have a complaint, they clean up for a while, or they clean up before Larry has time to get out there, okay? We would like, if possible, to have more timely response to the complaints, okay? This was August thirteenth, he won't be out there for at least another couple of weeks. I understand he has extremely heavy workload, and I love Larry, okay? I don't know if he needs more hours, or we need more help here in the zoning board, but I think you can help, and we'll have a zoning complaint, and the response time is improved somehow.
One question, is-
We're going to be talking to him about his contract and hours, so you guys aren't- I thought you lived at your mu, you live up there? And Eric, I thought that was your, I always saw the houses. So you're both there? Oh, okay.
No, it's my houses.
Oh, okay. Can I come up and could we come walk around there sometime?
Absolutely welcome.
I'll, I'll give you a call some evening or something, we'll take a look at it. Okay.
All right.
That's that, Jim.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to, did you get a copy of this?
I have a copy, yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm going to call for like a five-minute recess.
Sure.
You can fix housework.
We will. Can I kill the camera for five or?
Yeah.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned, and we are going to go into executive session subject to a roll call vote for the purpose of contract negotiations. I'll call for a roll call on the executive session. Andrew, aye.
Buman aye.
Dick, bid aye.
And we will be returning to open session after the executive session is over, and the broadcast will continue at that point.
The light's on now.
Yep.
Unreal. You're on.
Yep, we are reconvening and picking up the agenda. The next point, consideration of a joint meeting with FinCom and Accountant on RFT process. What is this?
Reserve fund transfer.
Yes, what is this? I thought we had a process for reserve fund transfer.
Yeah, is this coming up twice? We just talked about this, it was the water tank issue.
Oh, the water, okay, sorry. I thought I was reading a more, I thought this was a more general discussion. Yes, we've taken care of that. Okay, discussion regarding nongovernmental postings on towns' Facebook wall timeline. What is this?
So there's two requests. One comes from the Berlin Fire Company, and they wanted to put up information about their general call for contributions to their relief fund. They did a town-wide mail to everyone's homes, and they sent it to the Selectmen and asked if we could put up on the Facebook page. Judy said that she would be okay with it, and Walter did not favor it.
And I want to confirm that they were a 501(c)(3) organization?
They have not gotten back to you with clarification on exactly what they are.
I, I sort of came out in the middle on that to say, I wanted to be sure they were a 501(c)(3) organization, and I wanted a little bit more explanation that this was not affiliated, you know, with, with the town. Just to, you know, just to clarify, it wasn't the fire department or something like that. That's where I came out.
I can't understand, if they put a mailing throughout the town, you can't, that's the best thing you could do, to reach out, and then they want to put it on the-
Sometimes you need a reminder. I throw things on my desk.
What is the other, what is the other request?
Food, the food pantry wanted to put-
Well, they are a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, they are a 501(c)(3), and we know that.
Well, if you let one, that's a good one. Well, you've got a lot of all, but right, if it's a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, my feeling is, if it's a 501(c)(3) and it has some civic purpose, I'm not ready to set myself up to separate-
With a disclaimer that it's not-
Something that indicates clearly what they are and what the relationship is.
Right.
She's, I was counting on you to kick the food pantry off that, you know, the month before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Walter. No dog food either on that food pantry.
Oh, man, let's them eat dogs. Anyway.
So I built that, and I thought that I'd have a fire department response.
Yeah, until we get, I'm certainly not in favor of doing anything until we get response from the fire department.
It's the fire company. Yeah.
The fire company. Yes, ZBA needs clarification?
Yep. I clarified you.
Yeah.
With the fire-
An explanation of the fire company, a confirmation that they're a 501(c)(3). But I personally would be willing to let them put it on if we get that sort of explanation disclaimer added to it and confirm confirmation they're a 501(c)(3) organization.
Or something.
No, I think it should be a 501(c)(3) because I don't want to get into, you know, I don't-
Causes.
Yeah, clauses, just without, you know, something fairly organized attached to it. At least, that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, we'll see what they are.
Yeah. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Okay. Consideration of application format for applications for cultural funds. Okay. We had talked about this before, and, thank you, Mary has put together, we talked about using Community, you know, Preservation Act application materials and, you know, and guidance for this as a starting point. And I, I see we have some of that stuff, but I think- And I, I see we have some of that stuff, but I think that's, I think we need to start with that, and...
I just want you to look at it if you want and tinker with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's fine. I'm happy to look at it.
I think the, so, if we look at the mitigation, there's one for open space. And that's usually handled through...
That one is not under our auspices, period.
And then senior housing is a, we have no senior housing, so I think we need the Council on Aging to, and we were talking about this at, at, at the...
Yeah, I was, I was, yeah, I was not speaking about those, those two lines.
Well, but we still need...
About this process.
Senior housing still needs some kind of process. And what's the fourth one? There's cultural and...
And there's an, is there an educational one?
No, that's in with cultural. Cultural has like...
Public safety.
No, there's another one besides public safety.
Capital.
Capital, capital, yes.
But that's...
Well, who's going to decide what? And so it's really a matter of first, how, who's going to be the decider on this, and then how are we going to decide it?
Okay, my, in my, I thought, I thought an appropriate way to do this would be for us to establish a processing. And right now, I'm going to talk about the, the sort of cultural, educational stuff, the sort of Community Preservation Act stuff, and then we can talk about the other two. Is that all right?
What, the cultural?
Yeah. The, this, this sort of Community Reinvestment Act type payments first, because I think they're...
Well, what's in cultural? It's got education, history, it's got quite a long list of things that it encompasses.
Right.
Do you have a copy?
I thought we just wanted the four categories, but then you'd said them. You want the breakdown of what that is?
I think after cultural, it tells you what's in there.
Are you talking about community, what, what do you...
I'm talking about the classification for cultural, what areas are in there.
And where, where are you getting this classification from?
From the mitigation contract.
Okay. With this new building, what I understood Larry to say is they're putting in more building than originally, right? And we get money based on the amount of footage going in, but this isn't going to count towards any more mitigation money.
Now, we have a maximum mitigation, and we actually get it at less than...
It's based on square footage.
It's based on square footage. If max is out, and we actually get it, we get a full payment under this, at something like eighty-five percent of build-out, so we get our full payment even before they build a hundred percent.
I guess his question is, but Larry was inferring that they were adding more square footage than was in the...
They, they cannot go above...
That's the agreement.
Four hundred and eighty thousand square feet without going before the town meeting.
So if they, we're going to put this building at the end, they'd have to take that off somewhere else?
Not necessarily, because they weren't, they, they had a, they went to town meeting and got an approval for four hundred and eighty thousand square feet.
Right.
I think that some of the initial plans showed that they were only going to build, let's say, four hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to get a full payment at less than a hundred percent build-out. But I'm, but I'm saying both things.
No, do you have the contract?
If they're addition.
Yeah, the first and the second, but it's...
Means that they have more than four hundred and eighty thousand square feet up there. They have to go to town meeting.
It's in the...
Okay?
Original? Yeah, the original will work.
Hey, Mary?
Yep.
Would you make a point to tell Larry what Tom just said? I mean, the idea, if they, he sat here and he said they, it sounds like two hundred additional feet in length in the width of the building, it sounds like a couple of lakes of land to me, huh?
Your discussion in the executive session?
No, no, this hadn't got anything to do with this.
But adding two hundred feet of pad to that...
Yeah, so if, if they're going to, total is going to be greater than four hundred and eighty thousand square feet, they got to know that they've got to go to town meeting.
Cultural, historical, educational, recreational, planning, cultural studies, and cultural activities and facilities.
Right. So again, I thought taking that, which have, have a real significant, almost a hundred percent overlap with Community Preservation Act purposes.
Except for the educational.
Except for the educational.
And...
Can I look at that cultural thing?
So, the cultural, there's category is cultural, historical, educational, recreational, and planning activities/studies, cultural activities and facilities.
Yep.
So all of those groups gets, that combined one is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
And then there's a capital plan, that's two hundred thousand.
Yep. All right, so my suggestion was that we use a, a Community Preservation Act.
Template application.
Template application for that one, okay? Making some minor adjustments, but not many.
Well, now, if I remember correctly, Community Preservation has ten percent goes to one, ten percent...
Again, I'm talking about, when, did you look at this stuff?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at this stuff, and I...
I didn't look at that stuff. When do I get a chance to look at it?
I, I, I just brought it down. I, I could send it to anybody.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I didn't send that as a PDF to everybody.
I, I think I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, these have pretty clear guidelines on, this percentage gets spent on this, this percentage can, needs to be spent on this. There's, there's like percentages in the CPA.
Right. A minimum of ten percent if they get any of the categories for CPA, open space, historic, recreation, and housing.
Right. And now, and again, I'm just talking...
What the application?
About the application and some of the review criteria, which says are consistent with, for instance, consistent with master plan, other planning documents, receive wide scrutiny, public input, preserve and enhance the character of the town, save resources that would otherwise be threatened, serve an underserved population.
Save.
Demonstrate practicality, feasibility, demonstrate the project can be implemented expeditiously and within budget, that it leverages additional public and or private funds, that it preserves or utilizes current, now, you don't have to tick all of these, but these are...
Right, but you need to...
And receive endorsement by other municipal boards and or departments. I mean, I think those, those are not a hundred percent matched, but there's a lot of, you know, a lot of...
Overlap.
Good stuff in there.
Yeah, I'm not saying you can't use it as a framework, but large parts of that aren't going to apply.
Right.
I would say some of it won't, but a lot of it will, yes.
Because we have much wider ranging categories. And then the question is, do you want to say that everybody at least gets ten percent of this? Because how are you going to decide if, I mean, you've got recreation, education, history, and culture, and I don't know what planning activities mean.
I mean, this is, this is a gift. This is spent in the discretion of the Selectmen.
I understand that.
And so therefore, I mean, we can, we have, we have a lot of latitude here, but I think we also have a commitment to establish, you know, a decent process. I'm not opposed to the idea of, of minimums, not at all.
I just, yeah, I mean, I just don't want it to end up being that some of these groups don't get anything.
Yeah, and I think the idea of a minimum is a good idea. I don't have a problem with that.
I can't ima, what group, yeah, they're all worthy. I mean, I can imagine.
I don't know what planning activities and studies means.
Well, and again, one of, one of the criteria here is, you know, is there alternate funding for those things, is some, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, Planning Board, for instance, has gotten money, you know, for master planning and so on.
Is that what you think planning is? Planning Board?
Well, I mean, it is sort of, planning typically means, you know, municipal planning or design, that sort of stuff, yeah.
Cultural activities and facilities. We can get a swimming pool.
Yeah.
Cultural, that's cultural.
No, that's recreational, I think.
It's also very cultural, too. Yes.
Yes. Well, if you don't put in enough chlorine, it becomes very cultural.
The, we could dredge out Big Hole and Mill Pond again, that's what we swim in.
Okay.
Do you want a committee, too? That's far down the road. I just thought that we were just going to take away the application at first.
Yeah, I think we need to take this sort of step by step. I think, yeah, I think an application, just looking at this again, it's, it struck me as though this stuff is a good, it's, you know, it's a real good start.
CPR language.
CPA language, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I have to say, I, I'd be happy to look at this, and, but I, I mean, I, if I'm going to have any significant part in putting it together, I think, you know, we have to have a, a deadline date of around November first or so, because I have a fair amount of business travel in the fall, and this litigation is going to be fairly demanding, I think, over the next sixty days.
Well, I mean, I could take a stab at it.
I mean, I think, personally, I think if we have an application, and if we had an application ready, you know, for presentation in December or so, and people could submit it in January, you know, that's, that's a long time ahead of the annual town meeting, you know?
That would, well, yeah. I mean, at this point, the money is just sitting in there accumulating.
Right, and we don't have all of it anyway, you know, I mean, we don't have seven hundred and fifty to spend right now.
No, we have a hundred, a hundred and twelve.
Yep. And we will have more after... Okay. I mean, I, I, I'm very happy if you send me this stuff. I'm very happy to take a, you know...
You know what? I'll, I'll look at it, and I'll make changes, and then I'll send it to you.
Okay, and then I'll try to take a look at it.
And then you can...
Mary, can you get me a copy of that, too?
Yes. The, the, just the raw form that I have, yep.
Yeah, just send it by email. You want an email?
I'm certainly going to look at it.
That's okay?
Yeah. Well, I'll stop in tomorrow and get a hard copy of it.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then the next is approval of alcohol consumption at library home brewing event.
I told them to. This is a thing where someone's going to show them how to home brew, and that they'll have some tastes of stuff.
Yeah.
So they're not selling anything.
No. I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
I don't either.
They don't need any licenser in that, like, that's it, okay?
No. That's, it's like a wine tasting.
When is it?
Uh, this month, actually. September, September.
Is it in that?
No.
September eighteenth, okay? So I would accept a motion to approve a beer tasting purposes at a workshop on home brewing, brewing to be held at the town library.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The, we have a request here to use the town office's hearing room for church services?
What church? The church in Clinton. I think he signed off, Pastor Bob.
No, I, I just, no, I don't think that's appropriate.
So, at the same time, he expressed his greater interest in room two-two-seven at the end of the hall.
I don't think it's appropriate.
And at the same time, I also steered him over to the eighteen-seventy town hall to rent space there. So he's met with Leanne about that first.
Yeah.
His heart was set more on this. I'll, I'll communicate to him that and tell him to continue on with Leanne renting weekend space over...
You could rent it to Jim at the church.
Yeah, he should, tell him to talk to First Parish Church.
First Parish Church, he could rent.
And there's a, there's, there's even a...
Rice Chapel.
There's, yeah, I mean, he should talk to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He may not have even known about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, obviously, they'll have to talk to him about it over there, but I don't think it's really appropriate for town offices. Okay, that gets us to miscellaneous correspondence.
What is the North of Borough ZBA eight-twenty-six hearing?
Nah, I just put it in there just so that you, not being a huge substance.
Does that have anything to do with us?
No. They send, neighboring towns will send their notices to us.
Never mind.
The next one, those, the one-hundred River Road West ZBA decision.
So the ZBA voted not to let them divide it into three lots, and then there was supposed to be a hearing on Friday? Did you go to Fri, was it this Friday for the demolition?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, I went to that, and, you know, fortunately, the, the commission will vote to hold it off six months. I wanted to talk about that before the night's over, you know, talk about it right now, as long as it's...
Yeah, I know.
What we, I sent a email to Barry, actually. My, my approach to it is going, still, I think the best hope of saving it is to get a brewery slash conference type center there. And at this point, the, the real estate dealer, Bill Watt, is very interested in that. He's a great guy, and interested in history and saving the great old place. So the strategy now is, I'm in touch with the Brewers Guild, and I'm going to try and get a media coverage, either Globe, West, or the Telegram, to come out and do a story. Berlin's looking for a brewery, and talk about the farm, and even have a map of the exits to the major highways and all the businesses that are around, and how that would be an ideal thing. And the Brewers Guild said that if we get that kind of coverage, they will shop it all around through possible interested parties and see what they can do. The other thing is, across the street, there's twelve acres that Reese owns, and they have given an option to this New England Football Association to put in a couple of soccer fields, but it's in chapter, so we have first refusal, and as you know, Senni has second refusal. So that's, that's the direction I'm going in right now, trying to see if we got some coverage, you know?
That's great.
I think, I hope it'll work.
Mm-hmm. That's fantastic.
That's the only thing I can think to do.
What's I, Mass Capital Asset Management, looking for office area?
Office space, they sent it to a dozen towns out this way, looking for transitional assistance and a couple of other state needs. The office space square footage they need is quite large. I don't know that you have anything.
No. What's the Cabela's opening plans for Berlin? That's cute.
Yeah, I think that Dennis got something stating that they're opening, it's a press release that Cabela's actually issued, so it's spring.
But it doesn't have, it's opening in the spring, it doesn't have a date.
Uh, the press release, did, did you get that press release, too?
I saw the press release, it was just kind of a... All right, never mind. So the, the groundbreaking planning for Mass Works was going to be tentatively on the eighth. No, now it's the eighth. And it's not, when I was talking to Keith about it, it's not clear that we're going to have signed the contract by then, so I don't know that it's going to be on the eighth.
Just on X, the oh-eight and the thirteen Highland Commons Development Agreements got recorded, yep.
Okay. Good. Yep. All righty. Anything else?
Well, I would just say that this meeting is a little bit frustrating in a way. This thing that happened on Highland Street, in my opinion, you know, is what's happening too much in Berlin. Things are getting out of hand, and we're losing the character. You were just talking about some of that money we're getting, and you use it to preserve and enhance... You were just talking about some of that money we're getting and use it to preserve and enhance the character of the town, which we're interested in doing, and then you have something like this, just get out of control. And I've got a question for you, Tom, what you think of this?
Yeah?
The, now, in Berlin Auto Parts, and we all love Clayton and Vaughn is excellent too, but permits were granted to them individually, now they're incorporated. Larry just gave a letter and I almost, I wanted to talk to him about it, but that's all right, to them saying they could add this building, whether it would be desirable or it wouldn't be. It's an additional structure and to me...
Didn't they get a site plan?
They went to the ZBA for it.
Which gave them a special permit and Larry's...
But wait a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
Isn't, I mean, the bylaw is a bylaw and isn't the bylaw strict on if you have a building, a non-conforming building, you can add to it a hundred percent or whatever, but you can't add another structure in a non-conforming, a non-conforming structure?
No, you can...
Can you do that?
You can add, yes. A structure is considered a use.
Yeah.
And I, I could check this out, it is getting, it is getting late and I haven't looked at this in a while, but my memory of it is that you could increase a use by a percentage, that's like, I think, fifty or a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And that the structure would be probably considered a use, but I would recommend that you look at the ZBA ruling, because the ZBA decision will tell you...
Yeah.
On what basis they approved that under the bylaw.
Yeah, look at that.
Yeah. So, rather than guessing.
Well, I know, oh, I was at the hearing, I mean, what's her name down on Central Street? Was really against it, she agreed with me on that.
Lynn Ryan?
Lynn Ryan?
Yeah, Lynn, Lynn, excuse me. Yeah, she felt very strongly about that too, everybody else gave in. And I'm just worried about it, they come and sell it.
Do we have a copy of that already or is that not?
I was just going to go pull it, actually.
Okay, I mean, you could send it, I'll take, what I'll do is I'll take a look at it.
It's just a chat, I mean, I'm not going to go after it, but...
I'd have to see, you know, the basis upon which...
The point is looking ahead, I mean, we saw what happened on Wheeler Hill there, up on Highland Street and with a, somebody that took a garage and increased it, a welding job. Nobody had ever expected what's there now and if they had, probably never would have granted the permit.
Is that the decision in there, is that what's listed on this list?
I like this certainly.
I didn't see it.
There's...
I didn't see it.
No, it's not in here.
I have seen the decision.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd have to look at the decision and chat with you about it, I just... And...
Okay.
Okay? Anything else?
I think I just got emailed, I don't think I have the decision on that.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, when we get it, we can take a look at it, but I think that's, and I can look at the...
But my point that we brought up tonight, I mean, we've just got to be really careful, giving out permits and everything else. What do you want and what can it grow into?
No, I'm with you.
Particularly when people are enforcing it.
And that's one of my, that's, that's one of, you know, that's one of my concerns, the, we were talking about earlier, you know, it's like, we got to, you know? And I mean, historically, we, they did the asphalt one up there, we didn't have a permit.
Right.
And I pushed for that and we actually won the court case and expenses and they had to close down the asphalt. So, you're trying, with you wanting, trying to button these things up.
Yep, okay. Very good.
And that was, that was a real success.
Yeah, it was.
All righty, anything else?
Nope.
All right. Hearing nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.